Trustee meeting on November 14th if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so first we have public comment if anybody wants to come up and introduce yourself or give a few minutes to talk, anybody in particular, Reese, any, would you like to just come on up and, am I peer pressuring you? Scott?
Dad, you go.
I shouldn't peer pressure, I'll let you have the hook this time. All right, is there anyone else for public comment? I will close the public comment. Next is to look at the board minutes of October 24th, we've all had a chance to look at, there are no corrections and I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray. Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next we'll consider the approval of the Second Amendment of the interlocal agreement for the mental health co-response team, so we have Chief Gallagher.
Good evening, and thanks again for letting me come before you for another amendment to our, our local agreement for our co-responder program. The agreement you have in front of you, we talked about a couple meetings ago where we addressed us being awarded a SAMSA grant to include a fourth community. So all this Second Amendment interlocal agreement does is add the city of Rochester to the agreement, all the other agreement stays the same, other than I think we added a line in there that we don't have to redo this every year if the parties want to end it, there's a 90-day termination agreement with the program. We were updated, we received the money from our grant, we're working on the process right now with that grant, where we may be able to roll the money over to '23 because it's so late in the year of being awarded, but that's still a work in progress, but if that does happen, that would be a great benefit to us down the road in some of the funding for the, for the next budget year. But that, the local agreement in front of you is signed by me, so I'm asking for the approval for the, to amend the local agreement and then also that I can sign that for, on behalf of Bloomfield Township.
Do you want to come up and highlight anything?
Well, I was going to say, and Hillary's here, if, I do have the quarterly report that came hot off the press, that we can just talk about numbers, but then Hillary was working in the township today, so I asked her to come on up in case you guys had any questions for.
Anyone have any questions?
It's a wonderful program and we're really happy to see it continue and expand, so thank you.
And, and so Troy is up now running 100%, Hillary onboarded there, Ken is his name, he is now a co-responder over there under the same program, Oakland County also has one now, and she's very busy, but they're looking to hire.
They're going to hire more.
A lot more.
Yeah, they're going to hire more.
Yeah, so the, this co-responder program that we helped develop and are implementing is really going to take off throughout the county, and there's, our commissioners and have really taken notice, and we're hoping that this will be a regional, kind of regional task force here in the next, I want to say a couple years, but that's not real long, it's not a long time.
Amazing to see how it's grown in just two years with, started with just three communities and it's just exploding, so you've made such a difference, not just to the community, but here with our first responders as well, you've made quite an impact, so we appreciate you.
Happy to be here.
So, and just, I'll give you a real quick update from, we are, this was quarter four for, for the core program, because we started about a year ago on September 1st-ish, was when we went really live. For the entire program, for our three communities, there's been 624 referrals that she's helped with, that's a lot for one person, that's a lot. Bloomfield Township in itself, we did 221 referrals in that time, for that full, full year, which is pretty incredible as well. What's nice to see about, about is, is under this last quarter, we kind of look at how many times did we have to convince somebody to go to the hospital, or did we have, we had to commit them, or they voluntarily committed themselves? And there was 30 incidents where they went voluntarily, which means our officers in their CIT training, the crisis intervention training, those techniques are working in dealing with our residents suffering whatever type of crisis they're in. And then there was 25 involuntary, but that could also be many different things, it could be alcohol-related or, you know, drug-related that where they can't really consent, where we're making that consent for them. So, but 47 cases in this quarter were left under the family care, which is a big deal because we can then leave them home, not tie up the jails, not tie up the hospitals, and the follow-up care continues when Hillary follows up with, they may already be in a program now that she can follow up and ensure that the care is being followed and medications are being appropriated right, so. I mean, I don't know if you want to add anything, it's been, we, she just quoted an officer, they went on a run the other day, and one of the officers was talking with somebody and they happened to be both social workers, and he's, he's one of our quieter officers and he was like, this is the best hire we ever made, so.
Just not expected to hear that from him, so it's a very nice compliment, yeah.
Buy-in's a big, big, big part of this, and there was fear at the beginning that your place, some police officers were social workers, and that, that is not the case, it's a, it's a partnership that we, I can't stress enough how important it is for us to continue this, so.
Only one question I have.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's really a question, but, you know, if you ever find, I mean, Hillary of course is doing such an amazing job and the program is fantastic, and I'm so wonderful, wonderfully glad that it's here and so are the residents. I just say that, look, if you ever find that you think you need more resources because the, even greater capacity is required, I bet you, I mean, I would support that, I would imagine that everybody else here would too, so.
With that grant, that is one of the interlocal, we're going to, we're, literally, they just did interviews last week, we, they're having the same problem everybody else is having, quality candidates, and the fit in this type of job, in this specific co-responder is crucial. It really probably makes the partnership, and that, we, today, they interviewed somebody that they're recommending for us next week probably, to add to our, our four communities, so we'll have two, and between the two of them, I, again, we'll, it's exciting.
624 referrals, that's, we could use more, and I bet you there's more referrals out there, so.
There is a lot more.
At least on my behalf, I would certainly support that.
And just in the timeframe, we've trained Hillary, a couple of other officers in our place, Auburn Hills and Birmingham have been trained in the CIT training, which is a, they had to go, it's an extensive training for them to be able to train, you know, be the train, the trainer, and they're already up to 81 Oakland County officers trained in the last two and a half months, three months?
Yeah.
So that's a lot, that's really good for that type of training, because that's a week-long training, 40 hours of hands-on, scenario-based, information-based training.
Thank you.
I just, I think it's a great program, I'm just really glad that we're one of the communities that had it, and your predecessor did a great job of getting it to us, so I'm glad we're expanding it, and I echo the clerk's comments about, you know, expanding it more if need be, so I would make a motion to approve the Second Amendment interlocal agreement and authorize Chief Gallagher to execute the agreement.
Motion by trustee Schostak, support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Christine Devara here, and she is here to introduce the Community Development Block Grant for the application for 2023, and to set the public hearing for December 12th.
Good evening, thank you. Would you prefer I'm there? Doesn't matter, good, okay. So before I touch on the block grant, may I give a thank you to the community?
Sure.
So of course, some of you know that, all of you should know, that 15,999 people said yes to BTSS, and we could not be happier. The funds will become available in 2024, and that'll really solidify our foundation for programs and services, so we're, we're very thrilled for that. Our entire team, of course, appreciates, excuse me, the strong showing of community support, so just wanted to take a second to say thank you. Onto the grant, Senior Services has managed the Community Development Block Grant Program since 2009, we've invested over $720,000 assisting low-income seniors with essential home repairs. This service enhances their safety and fosters greater independence for them. This funding is also crucial to Meals on Wheels. Seniors with mobility challenges receive nutritionally-balanced meals, a safety check, and a social connection with our wonderful volunteers. With your support, we will continue these services in program year 2023, and the estimated planning allocation at this time is $50,000, and they, that is for projects that principally benefit low and moderate income persons and senior citizens. The program details and impacts will be presented prior to the hearing, and we are requesting that the public hearing be held on Monday, December 12th.
Do we have any questions for Christine? Quite a bunch. I guess our talkers are Brian and Neil. With that then, is anyone willing to make the motion to set the public hearing?
Sure, so moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
December 12th for the public hearing.
Support. Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. See you again.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Can I, one quick question just for clarity, is, is it Monday the 12th? It says we scheduled Monday the 14th below, in, I'm sorry, looking at the memo.
I was just going by this, sorry.
Yeah, the memo, it says the 14th here, the 12th above, okay, great.
It is, yeah, I believe it is the 12th.
Great, thank you.
Not another one of those.
We had one, I know, so I just wanted to make sure, because you said the 12th, so.
And I said it, so, yeah, thank you for checking.
So next we have consider reaffirmation of the 2007 master plan update as recommended by the planning commission, and we have Patty Volker.
I think the Wingstop.
Oh, did I skip Wingstop? I'm sorry. Consider approval of a site plan and special land use request for Wingstop.
How much does my queue?
Andrea Bibby here tonight.
Hello.
We talked about it out there, I thought we'd already talked.
I'm just going to pull up my PowerPoint here, give you a quick overview of the proposal this evening. My name is Andrea Bibby, most of you are familiar with me, from the planning division here at the township. So what you have before you this evening is a request for a special land use. Any businesses within Bloomfield Township that seek to operate before 7:00 AM and after 9:00 PM do have to apply for special land use. So this, for this evening, at 1981 Telegraph, which you can see an aerial up on your screen there, this is in the Village at Bloomfield Development, which most of you, I'm sure all of you are very familiar with. This was, this Wingstop, which is the, the store that is seeking extended hours of operation, is located within the portion that lies within, entirely within Bloomfield Township. So it is within the strip center that is located just in front of the Henry Ford, and the address is 1981 South Telegraph. So up on your screen, you can see the property zoning, the zoning classification for the property is zoned B3 general business, and within, as I stated, any businesses seeking to operate beyond the regular hours has to come before you for consideration. The request this evening for, on behalf of Wingstop, is to operate from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, or I'm sorry, 12:00 AM daily. So in reviewing the, the proposal, as I stated, up on the screen you can see the, the zoning is the B3 classification. This is a, the site plan over, giving you an overview of the development, the Village at Bloomfield Development. Surrounding the Wingstop is Menards, there is a Planet Fitness, Hampton Inn and Suites, and then also there is the multifamily residential development as well, they're located immediately adjacent to the site. So with this proposal, there are no changes to the site itself, the ingress and egress to the site would remain as it is from Telegraph Road. There are no other site improvements or changes regarding parking, landscaping, or anything else, this is solely just for the hours of operation. They are currently open and operating. So just, we have provided for your clarification, some other businesses that are located north of Square Lake, within the same corridor, if you will, as the Wingstop, and historically there have been a few that have been granted extended hours of operation, including the shops within Bloomfield Place, which is across the street, which has the Chipotle, the Potbelly, and Starbucks. They were granted hours extending to 10:00 PM, as well as there is the roadside bar and grill, and Fifth Tavern, which are all, also located within the vicinity, those are, they were given approval to close at 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. And then we also have Nippon Sushi up in that area as well, that was approved to operate until 10:00 PM Monday through Saturday. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of, of the business variety that does occur north of Square Lake, just to kind of give you an idea. According to Wingstop and their representation, they indicate that the operational impact of the improved, of the extended hours would improve their business and help them because they have indicated that approximately 20% of their daily sales occur between 9:00 PM and midnight. They are strictly a carryout-only establishment. We do have representation here from Wingstop, so he can answer questions as it relates to the operation, but it is solely a pickup only, and if there's any deliveries that occur, it's not sponsored by Wingstop themselves, but a similar, like Uber Eats or DoorDash, they do pick up and deliver using, going into Wingstop. The lobby area of the Wingstop is approximately 112 square feet, so it's a very small lobby, wouldn't, it wouldn't account for or allow for eating-in establishments. We don't feel that, in our review, that extending the hours of operation till midnight would not negatively impact or modify the existing vehicular or pedestrian traffic patterns. They do have ample parking for the uses, and then also for consideration for special land use, is any noise or odor or aesthetics or lighting impacts on adjacent properties? And there are no changes to noise, odor, aesthetics, or lighting to the adjacent properties. This has been, had an opportunity to be reviewed by our design review board on September 21st, 2022, and you can see the motion which is contained within your packet. It did, the motion did carry two to one to forward it on to the planning commission. Then the planning commission had an opportunity to review this and did make a motion to forward it on positively to the township board for consideration. So for this evening, the request specifically before you is to consider allowing for Wingstop to operate from 11:00 AM to midnight daily. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, it's rather straightforward, but again, we also do have a representative here for Wingstop as well.
I will start by just saying that I was the one that voted no, but I always look into things. I voted no because my immediate response is never midnight near residents, so we did have the joy of being in that hotel for a few weeks because of my house being repaired, so I went over to those resident areas, and it is not, it's far enough away, it's super, it, it wasn't, my concerns weren't as, as valid because it wasn't up against the residents, whereas in the pictures, it seems like they would hear it. So I did do my due diligence, and I am no longer against it.
Thank you. Thanks for saying that, and thank you very much for the presentation, so. I'm Ryan, and I'm the development director and real estate director for Wing It North, and we operate 24 restaurants throughout southeast Michigan and northern Ohio, DBA Wingstop. We also have a couple other restaurants that we do, so we've, we've done this, and I'm here strictly to answer questions and whatever you guys, whatever you guys, whatever you guys want.
So I just have a couple of questions, I'm really familiar with that place, we're kind of five guys addicts, and you go up there for dinner, and, you know, there's the Comcast places closed, and there's ample parking, I can see exactly what you're saying, how it's not an issue. The only question I have is that all the other ones that have the extended hours, it's not seven days a week, so I didn't know if you considered till 11:00 PM or like Sunday night, like, does it have to be midnight every night? I, I know, just a question.
No, 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 I appreciate it, and that's what I like to do, I'll answer all your questions, and we are, I don't know if you want to say, you know, kind of that, you know, late night, you know, cheat meal, or something kind of a snack?
Taco Bell drive-through?
But, but we're also, we're extremely sports and event-related, so you take Monday night football, so we can't, we can't take Monday out of the equation. Monday night football is really big for us, and now they have Thursday night football, and colleges play, you know, late night on Saturdays, and so it's every day that there's something, and high school, you know, high school football is big, and by the time that game's over, if we're closed at nine, you can't, we're, we're done. They can't get out of there by that, so we're very driven by not only athletics, but also, you know, theater events within the community, and we have no idea when those are, they're not, you know, it's not, you know, Bloomfield only does stuff on Wednesdays, you know, so we can be closed every other night, it's not.
You don't have a night that's just so quiet that you wouldn't see?
No, it's, it's, you know, it's, that's the reason for the seven days a week, and people get used to it, so if they go there, you know, on a Saturday, and then they try to do it on a, you know, Monday night football, and we're not open, it's, it's, you know, it's across the country, that's.
So the only other question I have is in the packet, and you're Ryan, so this was something that I guess came from you in the packet. I know you don't, it's, it says you don't do dine-in, you don't do specific, your own delivery, you don't have drive-through, but it, there's a statement that's quoted, "They are a carryout-location-only operation with very little walk-ins." What does that mean? How can you have very little walk-ins when it's all carryout? I didn't understand the comment, maybe it's a typo.
Carryout delivery, and, and I didn't actually maybe write it, so.
Maybe it was missed, but it says very little walk-ins, and I'm thinking.
Very little walk-ins, meaning most of it's delivery, most of our business is delivery, phone-in, online, DoorDash, Uber Eats, they deliver most of it, very, very limited is actually pulling up, walking in, ordering it, and then waiting for 20 minutes. We make everything fresh, so our wings are going to take 20 to 30 minutes, no matter whether we're busy or not, it's just how long it takes to cook chicken. So we have, we don't have, and we don't rely necessarily on the walk-in, and so the walk-in is, it's mostly delivery.
So the walk-in, you order it there?
Now, the walk-in will be, if they order it, they can walk in, grab their order, and leave, but it's not walking in and ordering.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I have a couple of questions and a comment. First, so this is a franchise business, now this is an international thing, okay, and Andrea, if we approve the special land use, that applies only to this business, correct?
Correct.
It wouldn't, if they were to move out, that space could be leased with the same special land use provision without coming back to the board?
That is correct. Any other business that would be looking to occupy that space and having, if they did have a request for extended hours, they would absolutely have to come back to the township board.
Okay, and my comment is, and I'm sorry, I missed your name here, Ryan, Ryan? I'm just impressed because everybody is struggling to hire right now, how you would staff from 11:00 AM to midnight every single day, I mean, you see all the fast food businesses cutting their hours because they can't hire people, so that's not a question, I'm not going to, if you stick around, I'd love to hear what, what you're doing differently than everybody else, but I just, I, I think that's impressive, so.
All right, well, if you don't want me to answer it, I won't, but I'd be glad to right now.
I know, it's okay, we don't need to.
If it, if it makes you feel bad, all these are the questions that I had too, and I will promise you that the ones that are saying they're open till midnight often aren't because they don't have the people even coming in, like Planet Fitness closes at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock some nights, 10:00 at the latest, because again, we lived right there for, for weeks. The latest I ever saw Planet Fitness, which is supposed to be 24 hours, 10:00.
Yeah.
Most nights, 8:00.
Right, and I don't want to, I mean.
Correct, like, we might give you to midnight, it'll be great if you're the first one to make it there, but in that complex.
Even better, give us a challenge.
It was the quietest complex I've ever lived in, which is also why I was very protective of it when I heard they wanted midnight, because I'm like, wait a minute, people who are there, this is really quiet.
Yeah.
But then again, you feel bad for the people working in that, in the places where they do need to, like one of the officers begged.
Well, I mean, I.
And Menards is the same way, so, so part of my, what I do. I go there and I look at stuff at night, I actually have to go to Northville after this and look at it at night, and I look at this area, and Menards may close at a certain time, there's activity all around. The, the apartment complex over there, call it more garden because it's, it's really nice, there are people in and out all the time, I don't know if they're going to, to work, from work, going to the airport, flying, young professionals, there's, there's activity over there all the time, and that's the reason we chose this particular location in Bloomfield, is because, number one, Telegraph, it's a highway, you know, it's not, you know, sleepy lake shore, dry, you know, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a highway.
Yeah.
And there's activity all the time, and I, I have stayed out there in, in my car and watched the activity around there from 9:00 AM to midnight and see it, and, and that's one of the things I like, because there, it's, it's vibrant, it's not, you know, crazy-packed, but there is people coming in and out, and we're not the only, you know, we're not the only people there with a, with a light on.
Right. Well, IHOP supposedly is open till midnight.
They're not.
Only on the weekend.
Again, we tried getting food after 8:00 almost every night, and what was the, it's kind of a good night, they're open till 9:00?
They used to be 24-hour?
No, they still list themselves on Google, do not ever trust Google, we have learned our lesson so many times, you will show up to many closed businesses.
Well.
So that's what, the only reason why I was, why I changed from a no to a yes is it's carryout-only.
Yeah.
If it was sit-down, if it was, that would be a lot of cars.
And no, no alcohol.
No alcohol.
Yeah, and then no alcohol, no driving drunk.
Totally carryout, and to answer your question super fast about our business model, we own 24 and operate 24, 23 of them are open until midnight. This one's not, and hopefully, maybe after today, it will be. We hire people based on the shifts, and people are expected to work until midnight, so if they, they have a shift, it may be 8:00 to midnight because they might have something to do, they may have kids they have to take care of during the day. So the later night shifts are actually good for a lot of people, so we don't have, you know, we're not hiring more than other people can, we just are able to space them out a little bit more and give the, you know, the moms or dads or whoever it is, you know, an opportunity maybe at night, and that's kind of how we do it, and so this one now being open till midnight, we've already hired people based on midnight, that's just what we do. This was somewhat of a surprise.
Well, thank you, you know, thank you for that, well, in light of the fact that you've already hired for people for it.
I was going to say, they're not working till midnight without approval, right?
We want those people to, to get what they expected and you to get your expected, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Just one last thing for you.
We have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, it wasn't listed as a public hearing, is this a public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know, do we normally have a public?
For special land use, yes.
Okay, so, is there anyone for the public that would like to speak on this?
I mean, I assume it was noticed, right?
It was properly noticed as a public hearing.
Since this is a public hearing, we have a special, again, where the public can talk, no, and I will close the public comment.
Then I just have one quick comment too, so, thanks for catching that and we'll have, to have the public hearing, because it was properly noticed by the way, as indicated for that, and timely. But as Supervisor Walsh was mentioning, and we talked a lot at the DRB about this, and, you know, the consistency is really important to me and I think most people, and, you know, if this were at a place that's surrounded by residential neighborhoods, it would, you know, I vote differently than I'm going to vote tonight, as Supervisor Walsh indicated, and, you know, she will, would as well, and, you know, this is, this is definitely the retail business area of the township, we sent the notice out within a 500, you know, feet radius like we do with everything, and it doesn't touch any residential areas, and it may just nip the very corner of where the apartments are, but barely if that, so it has my support, it's in line with the other retail restaurant businesses in this district, and so I think we're treating, you know, apples like apples, and.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, if I would have heard noise over there, I'm not going to lie, I wouldn't switch my vote.
Did you go and stop, have any? Did you pop in and get some wings?
Did you try?
I did not.
They're really good.
I felt like I was going to sway my vote, and I was trying to stay, so I did not.
I'm telling you, I. I'm telling you, I changed my opinion on you.
You guys see the nice one now. He got to see the tough one at DRB. I was like, hands a little up.
Well, you know, I think about having raised three kids, you know, like on their way home from their friends or a game, or like you said, or a movie or something. My son was big on going through the Taco Bell drive-through because it was all that was open that late, or occasionally, I guess, a McDonald's would be open late. But I would think the apartment complex might actually like, I don't know, but they might appreciate something that is open later because there really isn't a lot in between. Businesses not having enough staff, they close early, and we've seen that more than anybody staying open too late. So good for you if you can do it.
And we actually, when we're, when we're, when we're open and about to close, we get a lot of the hospital staff that are switching shifts, that actually come in or are disappointed that they can't do it. And Menards, kind of the same way. So it's not only, you know, for that, but it's also for the shift workers and, you know, people that are out, you know, working beyond the 9:00 to 5:00.
Well, so, I mean, the bulk of your business, or if I understand you correctly, is delivery.
Yeah.
And you go on DoorDash at 9:30 or 10:00 o'clock at night.
And nothing's available.
Then nothing's available. So I know I've tried. Well, but I mean, he.
That's a problem.
Yeah, so.
You know, some complexes like this where you would literally have people backed up right to it, you know, when you think about like a Maple and Telegraph or something. This is the one area of the township that there truly is no resident affected. You know, there's another business that's trying to get midnight and I might vote no on because I stood outside and I would absolutely hear it. But this is the one spot that seems like the utopian area for this.
Why we.
Why you chose it?
I'm gonna take that, I'm gonna take that as a compliment because I do select the locations, so.
Yeah.
No, we looked at a lot of places in Bloomfield.
This time you choose wisely.
You chose wisely.
This is, this is the area that we thought it would, it would work, so.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the site plan and special land use request for Wingstop as presented.
Motion by trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
You already got what you want.
Positive wings.
Can I open till midnight tonight?
Oh.
What's the process?
Ask Andrea. And granted approval, yeah.
It is, so we're good to go?
So you guys can go get wings after?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have people, you have people that will work from mid till midnight tonight?
So my question to you was, are there people working there right now?
Tomorrow.
But tomorrow or the next day, but.
Yeah, it's effective.
I'll talk to you.
No, you're all approved.
No, your approval tonight is your approval forever.
That was a good question, though.
That is a good question.
Yeah. I would be more worried that he had people there ready to work at midnight tonight.
These guys approve it?
These guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
I was top on him at that meeting.
Yes, you were.
Right?
They were gonna be open tonight till midnight. We should have had a little field trip and go check it out and see, like, when were you hired to work till midnight?
Do you own the one at Wayne State? Ryan? Do you own the one at Wayne State?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. I used to go there a lot.
No, I didn't say it. No, no.
I lost all control of this meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I lost all control.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Thank you.
Next, we have consider reaffirmation of the 2007 master plan update as recommended by the planning commission. We have Patty Volker.
Thank you. So the proposal tonight before you is to consider the recommendation from the planning commission. They are charged every five years to review the master plan pursuant to the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. The master plan that we are operating under is called the Master Plan Update of 2007. That actually was coined a update because it was an update to the 1991 master plan, master land use plan at the time. So the reference to update is just referencing the fact that it was a continuation and then obviously enhancement, if you will, of the plan that was most recent at the time, which was 1991, and back in 2007. So since then, the planning commission has been forwarding on recommendations to you for the last five years. Their, their task in looking at the goals and objectives of the master plan to see if they're relevant, if they're still pertinent to the goals of the township in its present day. And they in turn then review the, the various implementation schedules that are found in each of the respective chapters that are found in the master plan. The master plan update of 2007 is on the website, and hopefully you had an opportunity to refresh your memory and go through that. There also was an amendment in 2018, a sub-area plan specific to the Squirrel and South Boulevard. That too is an amendment to the master plan. And both of those documents were reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting of October 19th. And to, to consider the request, we asked the planning commission several questions, and it really is specific to how relevant is the plan today. And, and one of it speaks to, were there any major changes in the community that were anticipated at the time that it was adopted? And so I highlighted for you just some features that occurred over the last five years, or actions that occurred over the last five years, that really are still in the spirit of the recommendations of the master plan. And I bring to your attention the more recent improvements to I-75. It was the 2020 M.I.-75 modernization improvement plan that involved, it's the Squirrel Lake entrance and exit reconfiguration and improvement. That is an example where we have these infrastructure improvements, whether going through the state or the county, primarily are considered, you know, more routine repair or improvements, but they're outside of our purview, but certainly consistent with our goals in the township. The other comment relates to, especially as we relate to those major thoroughfares, is that most of our commercial is found within those thoroughfares. And anytime that there's been improvements, those improvements have been consistent with our ma, master plan recommendations. And then even tonight, as we've been talking about, the village at Bloomfield, you know, therein lies, obviously, a proposal that wasn't necessarily part of the immediate radar back in 2007. However, you know, as Redco acquired the property in 2014, ended up completing the project with the most recent improvement with the Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union in 2020, they are now completely developed. So anytime that we see any modifications to building facades or signage, we'll still have those agreements that'll be, or those applications gone before the Joint Development Council pursuant to the agreement. But again, those are still relevant to the overall recommendations of the master plan. And then lastly, in referencing the 2018 master plan amendment, a result of that was the Squirrel Road and South Boulevard Commercial and Residential Improvement Plan, or Site Plan, that was processed before the plant, the township board. And we see that now, you know, under construction at that intersection. The second area we asked the planning commission to consider is, has there been any departures from the master plan recommendations? And so as we look back, since 2007, there's been a total of 13 rezoning requests. Each of those rezoning requests have been consistent with the classifications of the master plan. So we can definitely confirm that that has been the case. And even over the past five years, we've had three rezonings. All three of them have been consistent with their master plan update. Again, going back to South Boulevard and Squirrel, that's one example, of the 1675 Telegraph, which was the Crestview Office Building, and then the last was 2275 Telegraph, which was the Valvoline Oil Change. And then the third question we posed to the planning commission has been, was, excuse me, are the goals and policies set out in the path still relevant? And to, to address these questions and then that topic, I referenced to them the implementation tables at the end of each of the chapters that are found in the master plan. The implementation schedules are identified as those that are either short, mid, or long-term timeframes for improvements, to make changes, or to implement policies or procedures relevant to the, to the recommendations found in the master plan. And so I, I asked all the departments if they could review the implementation schedule. We provided a secondary column called Status Update and asked them to update those columns to reflect up-to-date improve, updates, if you will, of what has occurred based on those specific action items. And so, you know, attached to this report, you'll see that those implementation schedules are current and up-to-date, and that planning commission spent time reviewing and highlighting many of those recommendations, or those action items, if you will, relevant to what's happened over the last five years, but then what's hap, what has actually happened currently as of 2022. So with that, the planning commission considered the documentation that's been presented to you. They held their discussion on October 19th. They did take an opportunity to review again their vision statement that they crafted when they were charged with creating the, the master plan update back in 2002. And that was to, to identify this as a, a master plan so as to address that Bloomfield Township will remain a premier residential community, offering its citizens pristine water features and woodlands, exceptional educational opportunities, exemplary municipal services, and a vibrant, diverse, and upscale business community. Bloomfield Township will remain Michigan's most desirable community in which to live. So that held true, you know, with their review as well. And so at the end of their discussion, they unanimously recommended the township board to confirm the master plan update along with the attached implementation schedules, along with the amendment. After five years, they found that the goals, objectives, and strategies are still relevant, and the principles of the plan are still pertinent with the state of the township. So with that, the planning commission is asking you to accept their recommendation to reaffirm the master plan of 2007. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions?
I just have one comment that in going through it, I was very happy to see, quote, "Planning remains a goal for future development of township park space," and that was still in the plan, and I like that it's still in the plan. So, and thank you for that report.
Anybody else?
I'm just curious, logistically, because, you know, we hear a lot of talk that we need to have an updated master plan. And I think we just heard a lot about the fact that what we wanted, it was so sort of ongoing, and it's still sort of what we want going forward in the future. So what, because I mean, like, when you read 2007 update, it seems like this must be outdated. So what do we have to do to just make it, you know, 2023 plan? Does it have to be a whole new plan?
Well, they, this is a 20-year master plan. So technically, when it was adopted in 2002, 2007, excuse me, 2007, I'm doing math in my head. 2007, it was an update to the 1990, the 1991 master plan. So the reference to the date is just the, at the date of adoption. We are charged with this whole process of reaffirming and evaluating those goals and objectives every five years, just to your point, to make sure that they're current and relevant. At the end of this next five years, that'll be a discussion that the, the township board will have in wanting to then proceed with an implement, a, a course of action to be able to amend, to proceed with a master plan study, of which most likely we would be hiring a planning consultant to assist us through this process. It is a 12- to 14-month process where you're engaging the community with a variety of topics and, 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 I'll call them charrettes, but opportunities for meetings for the various stakeholders, you know, based on criteria or location or topic, all culminating into then a final recommendation, which is a similar document that you're seeing. So your, your timeliness is that it's, it is on our last leg, if you will. And so at that time, you know, there'll be then a reassessment of, maybe hopefully carrying forward many of, or most of, these recommendations, but making it at that point a 2027 plan from adoption.
Thanks.
Good question.
So it's on schedule for 2027, but the, the board could've decided to do it sometime sooner if, if we wished.
Oh, absolutely. It's intended to be long-term, long-range. However, you know, there's, there's a little bit of pre-planning necessary because, you know, the thought was if, you know, you want to proceed with this, it's gonna be a timeframe where you're, you know, we're gonna be engaging for, you know, over a, a long period of time to create this very important document. So you're right, the timeframe could be, you know, within that next five years.
We would want to remember if we do the strategic plan that we're talking about, which, you know, different than the master plan.
Correct.
That does involve the same people, so we wouldn't necessarily want to do them both.
Doing both at the same time, no.
Because that would tax that department pretty heavily. So if we were to pick that as either one of our ARPA funds or also one of just the general budgets, that would be ongoing for a little while, and then we would probably start, almost be ready to start for the '27 by the time that one's done.
And that would be good homework, if you will, for then, this master plan effort, so that there might be some good synergy there.
So '27 is, is thought of as the end date when something new would need to be in place, which means we start in '25, right? I mean, now, '27 is when we, isn't when we start at working on a new plan and put into place in, in '30, but we have to have a new one in '26.
I would think that you'd want to start the conversation early. And there's, there's nothing that says that it couldn't be earlier.
Excellent.
So I appreciate, you know, on annual basis, let's have this conversation to see where we are as far as our timing.
Makes sense to me, and so does the timing you mentioned, you know, as far as a strategic plan first, a master plan next.
Because right now, we don't have a strategic plan, so best to start with that one, get that under, under our belt, and then go to the next one where we're tweaking and fixing and thinking forward, because things a lot will change in the next 20 years, so.
Oh, yeah.
As it has in the last 20.
Right.
Exactly.
Exactly. And if there's no more questions, I would look for a motion.
Salute.
Motion by trustee Ficki.
Support.
Support by trustee Shostak, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Here we used to, the other two, they're the more vocal. This is getting everybody out of their shells. Next, we have approved payroll and vouchers for November 14th.
November 7.
Oh. Oh, my gosh. It keeps skipping everything.
You skipped Martin.
Yeah, here we go.
It's like I'm on a time limit or something today. All right. So next, we, sorry, I have.
Too long.
Update concerning of the November 8th election. We have a quick report.
Hello. Well, I must say that my, on behalf of my office, my staff, and the 200-plus people that worked on this election, who live in this township or, or very nearby, thank you, everybody. It was a orderly, successful election. As much as people were worried about there'd be problems here or there, I can report that there were no problems or issues in the township, is, which is what we expected. And this is a quick report on, you know, what, what happened in this last election. Most importantly, I hinted at it already, but, you know, our elections are people-powered. They are run here by local folks. The clerk, myself, is stashed horribly responsible for the administration of elections. To be clear, you know, I, I don't make the rules. My job as, as clerk is to ensure that the rules are consistently and accurately enforced in all situations. And my staff and I work diligently to do that and set up systems and procedures and conduct training to ensure that that, that occurs. You know, there are just so many important people that play major roles in the election. I'm gonna highlight three of them and then a few others. But my deputy clerk, Deana Mondock, you know, is, has been with the township for almost two decades or roughly that amount. Her knowledge and, and depth of experience is incredible. You know, truly, we, we would not be able to run elections here with, without that level of expertise. And it's, it's the, it's the employees here that deliver the services to our community. And Deana's an exemplary example of that. You know, truly, we would not be able to run elections here without that level of expertise. And it's the employees here that deliver the services to our community, and Deana's an exemplary example of that. The two other three Ds in this team are Deana, Diane Perkins, who runs the absentee voter ballot team, and Dave Crouch, who runs the equipment, ensures that all is operating properly and troubleshooting during the day of the election. Deana, Dave, and Diane all really are the key hubs around which everything operates. Now, that isn't to diminish in any way the significant and critical support that comes from additional folks, starting with my department, Tom Hayes, who's here at the dais with us. You know, Sean Mueller, Kaderin Yankee, on my staff are all working like crazy on this election. You know, and we do it because we love it. You know, Election Day is one of those days that, I got in around a little bit before 5:00 Tuesday morning. I was home around 3:00 a.m. on Wednesday. And not far behind was Deana and everybody else. So it's something that they do because they're passionate about it. It's the same with Diane, it's the same with Dave. On the equipment team, by the way, I've got a big shout-out to the firefighters. Dave, Crouch, Chris Whiteham, Jim Valeria are all retired Bloomfield firefighters. It's been a decades-long collaboration, which I hope will continue, firefighters. We will continue to need your support in this area. The election also happens because we have people running the precincts, the absentee voter counting board. We also did a pre-processing team, and then there's a receiving board. The receiving board, by the way, in case anyone is wondering, is tasked with checking on all the work that was done during the day. They're provided with training and a checklist, and they review all the documentation, all the procedures, all the seals, to ensure that the precincts were all operating in accordance with requirements. After they finish their work, you know, the material is submitted to the county, where the Board of Canvassers reviews it. And then it is submitted from there, along with every other jurisdiction, to the state, where the State Board of Canvassers reviews and finalizes the election, which will occur at a meeting the Monday after Thanksgiving. I think it's two weeks from today. So hats off to all those folks that make elections happen here in the community, and I, you know, big thank you to them for their hard work and dedication. As I said, you know, what we do here relies almost exclusively upon the knowledge and expertise and dedication of those folks. Okay, so next slide, Tom. You know, we had a big, robust turnout in the township for a mid-year election. Here is a long-term sort of view of the top line is the number of registrations. We're at an all-time high, number of registered voters in Bloomfield Township, and our rate of participation was 67.4%, significantly ahead of the Oakland County average. And most of our precincts were, you know, roughly right around 65% to 68%, but there was one high, the 12th precinct was the highest, at 72%, and the first precinct was only at 58%. But there's a general trend line for all those elections that's, you know, up as far as participation goes, especially in the last, you know, six years. So next slide, Tom. Here's a little more on the voter turnout. You know, by age, our biggest turnout group is those residents who are 60 years of age or older. And the rest of that slide's self-explanatory. The highest turnout group, by the way, going back quickly, was men over 60 at 80%. And just as comparison, it's not on there, but two years ago, the highest turnout group, just as a percentage, was women in the ages, the age group of 18 to 21, followed by women who are 60 or over, and then followed by men who are 60 and over. So it's not the same number as it was two years ago. Okay, next slide. This is an interesting slide. We, you know, we watch and track every day the method of return for absentee ballots. You know, we received back 13,793 absentee ballots. Only, you know, only a quarter of them, actually, less than a quarter of them are coming through the post office these days. That's, we don't have this data from the past because it's something new we're collecting, but anecdotally, that number, you know, seems down. It's been reported to me from staff. And still, we got a lot of lobby drop-offs and counter-drop-offs. The Dropbox is new, so 16% of folks have noticed that it's there and started, have started using the outside drive-up Dropbox, which was installed just in September and was available as of that time. So absentee ballots are a little over 50% of the vote this past November 8th. And this is some interesting data about how we receive, the timing in which we receive absentee ballots back. You might notice from each of these, this is November 18 compared to November 2020, compared to this past November 22. Most people wait to the end. And despite all our efforts to, you know, don't delay, return your ballot today, waiting to the end creates issues. Number one, you know, if you are someone, when your ballot comes back, it must be accepted by us, which requires that we review the signature and it matches the signature on file. If it doesn't match, you know, we're statutory obligated to contact you and see if that can be corrected, and we do that. So every single one of these signatures was checked. Every time we found a discrepancy, the person was contacted. And, you know, if you sent it in a week before elections, you know, most of those folks were able to come in, even if they were at U of M, they were able to come back and pop in and sign the ballot. Folks that dropped it off on, you know, when we picked it up on Monday morning, the day before the election, and, you know, just their options to correct their signature errors were, you know, very limited to nonexistent. So getting them back helps us and the staff, getting elections counted more timely, and helps the voters as well, in case there is any issues, because we do contact everybody to provide them notice that their signature doesn't match and an opportunity to correct that. One other thing, Tom, for you. So the total numbers, you know, 2018 was 9,729. That was before, that was the year the ballot proposal passed, allowing no reason absentee. So you can see from that number, we've always had a high absentee ballot participation rate in the township. You know, 2020 was, you know, skyrocketed number. 20, you know, this past election is, you know, 30% higher than, you know, the previous midterm election. Will that continue? I don't know. I mean, the last slide is a little bit about that. I think that maybe it won't, but we'll talk about that when we get to the last slide. As has been indicated, there were two millage requests on this ballot for Bloomfield Township. One was to renew and increase the funding for the senior center, and one was to renew the safety path. They were consistently, this is a chart showing by precinct, the support of yes votes is pretty consistent from precinct to precinct, that folks wholeheartedly supported funding the senior center and providing additional resources, and continuing our safety path program at the same level. So thank you, residents, for that. And thank you, everybody, for being involved. As I mentioned earlier, the, you know, will absentee ballots continue at that same pace? It's a great question. Who knows? There was a ballot proposal on this last ballot that passed, number two, which changes election law quite considerably. And first and foremost, it provides nine days of early in-person voting for statewide elections. So that means by November, you know, well, August 2024, and 20, you know, November 2024, well, we will have nine days of early in-person voting. At least nine days, by the way, as is drafted in the materials. Jurisdictions could opt for more than nine days if they desire, but can never do less than nine days. The rules also provide, the language in the statute, the constitutional amendment, by the way, sorry, provide that jurisdictions can gather together and share voting locations by countywide, or by multi-jurisdiction type decisions, maybe West Bloomfield and Bloomfield and Birmingham, or those kinds of things are encouraged and specifically authorized in the statute, the constitutional amendment. Another change is that there could be one application to receive an absentee ballot that would cover all future elections. Military and overseas absentee ballots will be counted if they're received by the sixth day afterwards, as long as they're postmarked on Election Day. And then there are a couple of items that are, you know, in current election law that are now enshrined in the Constitution, such as, you know, currently, individuals are required to provide acceptable ID or sign affidavit of not in possession of ID. That's an item that will, instead of statutory, will be now, is now included in the Constitution. Also, some funding, funding for absentee ballot drop boxes, one per 15, every 15,000 registered voters. That funding would come from the state. How this will play out, who knows? I mean, now that's in the Constitution, the legislature will most certainly pass some laws implementing this and giving a little more meat around it. Secretary of State will likely have some regulations that help coordinate and give some instructions. And then we'll be left here to implement those things, and we look forward to doing it. I'm excited about these changes, and we'll see what the future brings as far as absentee versus early in-person versus precinct voting. So lots of changes on the horizon. Thank you for listening, and any questions about this material?
I just had one quick question.
Yeah.
So because of that postmarked new rule, then we won't necessarily have the results that night, or even the next day?
Well, true. If the number of apps, if the number of ballots that are outstanding.
Okay.
Exceed the margin of victory.
Sure.
Then we would be sitting around waiting. There were about 140 military and overseas ballots that we sent out for this November, so it's a small amount, unlikely to really delay the outcome of an election, but it's possible. For us, most of these military and overseas, it's two separate categories. It's military or overseas.
Okay.
Most of our voters in this category are the overseas category, that folks are living in, you know, maybe even attending school in Canada, or living in Europe, but last resided here in the township. Then we do have a few military, but most are overseas.
Does it say overseas, or does it say international?
Overseas.
So somebody in Canada wouldn't count?
It does. So.
Is there a C I'm missing?
No, no. So it says overseas, but it's defined, you know, more, that phrase is defined to include, you know, Mexico, Canada, that doesn't have to be in Asia or Europe.
Was that brought into the vernacular during, like, wartime, when people would have been overseas versus, I mean, we think, you'd have to look up to see when they invented, but my guess is it was military overseas back then. Now we have expatriates who work all over the world, but I'm just guessing that it had something to do with when it was enacted.
I don't know. It's been around for a while.
Yeah.
But it absolutely does include, you know, folks that are in Canada as well as, you know, Europe.
He has Canadian ties here, so you got to watch him.
I do, I do.
When he throws those barbs.
Who does? He does.
Yeah.
His son's in Canada at school.
My brother lives in Canada, too.
Yeah.
All U.S. citizens, by the way.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Do they have IDs?
No, kidding.
Yeah, yes.
Check their ID when they vote. No, I'm kidding.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, thank, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. And if anyone has any questions, by the way, out there at any time, please contact me. I'm happy to talk about it over the phone, in person, or whatever, so.
Like you said, that, you know, will absentee ballot requests and receipt of them continue to escalate? Well, with nine days of early voting, maybe not.
Well, one of the.
Some of us might switch to the early voting, because it's nice to put it through yourself and know it's done.
Absolutely. You get that immediate feedback, okay, I did it right.
Voting day, yeah.
But you can't change your mind. And I'm always surprised at how many people will submit their absentee ballot to us, and then they'll come and ask to spoil it and change it.
But once you, you truly vote it, then you don't.
You cannot change it.
Well, and the fun part is always when in a primary, when somebody's a new voter and they don't know, you can't split your ticket, and it jumps right back at you. Had that happened to me when I was young, and I was like, and he said, "You broke the machine." I was like, "What?" It's startling, but I do know, I mean, we've done that enough years at our age that, you know, it's like, the machine takes it. I haven't done that in a couple of elections, so. Thank you, Martin, for all you did.
Big thank you.
My pleasure, and on behalf of my team, and theirs as well, it's, you know, we do it because we really believe in this process and happy to be involved. Thanks to Tom and everybody as well. Right, Tom? We all love it. We can say that now. Don't ask me on, yes, he asked us last Wednesday, what it said.
No.
So next, we have to approve the payroll and vouchers for November 14th. We've all had a chance to look, unless there's any changes. I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Showstack.
Support.
Support by trustee Piki. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and your favorite motion?
We adjourn.
Motion by Clark Brook.
Support.
By trustee Murray. She hasn't done as many. I'm going to give that one to her. Trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you for joining us.